I'm sure because of that reason, so we're glad to have you. We'll get to know each other, we'll be here thirteen weeks, but there's a few now, you know, us church people, we all know each other, but there's a few people that aren't from this church, so I'm just gonna ask them to just introduce themselves real quick, okay, just so we'll kinda start to know them.
I'm Kenny in Score.
I'm saying who's not from this church, you go with us, yeah.
We're all good down this end.
Okay. That's it, Kenny, you're the only, you're the only one, you're the only one. And in case everybody doesn't know, Kenny is the ice cream man from Cherry Lane Road, right? I think everyone in here knows that, cause you've been there ten times. Kent's been, Kent and Robin's been there a hundred times.
I didn't even know there was a place to get ice cream on Cherry Lane, so not everybody knows.
Okay, well, he's the man, yep, so I guess you have a sign up. When you go, he's got a sign on Cherry Lane Road. And Jim's pretty much your neighbor, so he'll be coming to see you, yep, alright. I've given you a outline, the guys wanted to do that each time, so we'll try to have an outline, I wanted you to have a pad and pencil, because I'd be honest, I don't think it's what I'm gonna say, I'm interested in what the Lord says to you, maybe tonight, maybe tomorrow, maybe before we have our next session. So if you would, you know, take your pads home, if you have thoughts during the week or anything, you know, write them down, that's what we're here for. We're gonna do thirteen weeks, at least, I think thirteen will do it, we'll just see how it goes. We would love for you to be here for all thirteen, but if you can't, that's why I have this on tonight, cause we're recording, I think, and so if you miss a session, then you can get it and listen to it. So hopefully that will work for some that just can't help miss, but if you can be here all thirteen weeks, we'd love to have you. I call it, I kinda had to write this out as an introduction, the guys will have different things they do, some of the guys may not set up like this every time, I don't know, but this is kinda how I wanted to set up, and we'll see how it goes. But open forum is what I kinda put down on your introduction there, we want your input, I don't want it to be a lecture time from me, or really any of the other guys, we want your input, and that's what we expect. If you have thoughts, or if you come back the next week, we'll take a little time to let you tell us what the Lord's done with you that week, then we'll be happy with that. So we'll be on a schedule, but we'll have time to talk too, if there's something you wanna share. We want to learn together, it's not that the elders have all the answers, and we don't, I tell you that. And, you know, I think I can say that this, that this is the first time that the elders have done anything like this, is that true? Would you say that's true, to have a, you know, we've taught, but not to teach like we're doing, each of us are gonna take two lessons, and my two are the first two, and then you'll be through with me, so you may be glad of that. But we're gonna take turns and share with each other, and I expect the elders, if I say something wrong, or don't say something I need to, I expect them to let me know, and I expect y'all too, too, so it's just open forum as much as we can. You know, we'll try to stay on task as much as we can. Did I leave out anything, Tim, you wanna share anything?
Darryl has covered it very well, and speaking on behalf of the elders, we have taken the last seven months to learn ourselves. We met every Tuesday morning, and we were learning, and then we finally said, okay, we're ready to share this, but if there is one theme that we want you to get, it's our union with Christ, and appropriate to that, that is the core part of discipleship, we're making the disciples, and I know we're gonna go over the great mission and everything else during this, but our union with Christ, and the elders are learning as well. We appreciate Darryl getting us started.
Steve, do you like to say anything?
I would just, I would just add to Tim's piece there, that this has been a blessing to me, especially in this last time period that we've been together over this, and I think there's, there's an opportunity for us all to grow continually from this, and the hopes are, is that what, that's what we do in our faith, is grow, growing our faith. The one thing I would just add to the fact that Darryl was talking about is, as we interact and we communicate with each other, and we have questions, and we look for the answers biblically, there are no dumb questions. So if there's something that's on your heart to talk about, let's talk about it, because the worst thing we could do is let it sit still and not answer those questions. So I would just, just because it's the same thing that we did when we were going through all this, is we tried to utilize the time together to learn from each other, so that's what we should be doing.
Okay, Dale, where's Dale? Oh, okay, alright, well, if he has something, we'll do, Joel, would, do you have anything you'd like to share?
I would just say, I know that a lot of, there's been a lot of questions regarding what we're gonna do, and what exactly this is, and if you ask me that, and Darryl mentioned this, we all have kind of a different, I wouldn't say we're not united in mind in what we're doing, but maybe reminded me of this a couple days ago, or a couple weeks ago regarding my sermon, you know, I was watching someone else preach, and I thought, you know, they do a really good job of putting, you know, points in all these great takeaways that they want you to take away, and I said, that's really good, and she kinda looked at, I said, maybe I should do that, and she said, no, you shouldn't do that, and I was like, okay, maybe I shouldn't do that. That's what she reminded me was, you know, the word of God is living and active, the Holy Spirit is working in each and every one of our lives differently, and so, a lot of the approach of what we're gonna bring to you all, it's gonna be open-ended, it's gonna be for us to talk about it, and to discuss, and to figure out together, and that's kind of my thought on this, this whole thing. In thirteen weeks, if we come back and ask you, what did you get from the last thirteen weeks, I would expect that every one of you are gonna make a list with the same points on it, the Holy Spirit has different things in mind for each and every one of us, and so, you know, every time we come together, we're gonna just give that time to Him, and trust that the Spirit's gonna give us whatever we need for this next season, in our own lives, and in Grace Community Church.
Dale, I'm letting each elder say something, do you, would you like to say something as an introduction tonight? I may not have given you time to think.
That's fine, we just appreciate so much each one of you, and this is beyond my expectations, and so that's just the way the Lord works, as we quote the visions after each service, beyond all we can imagine, think or imagine, so just praise be to Him.
Yes, thank you, and as we get started, let's have a word of prayer. Heavenly Father, as we start our sessions tonight, Lord, just to pray that you will just bless our time together, and I can't wait to see some of the things that you tell these folks during this thirteen weeks, I look forward to hearing that, and I think you have many blessings in store for us as we go forward. Thank you for Grace Church, and that we are open to come and talk about being disciples, and may you just bless our time together, in Christ's name, amen. Well, one thing I'd like to start with is to tell you why I think we are doing this, over the last couple of years, God has been working on the elders, and maybe some of you, we may find out during this thirteen week session, but as Tim mentioned, we started meeting in January, but we started reading books two years ago, three years ago, about a missional church, and about disciples, and what it means, the thing that sticks in my mind is what it means to go outside the walls. I've got a couple of quotes I wanna read to you, so I won't say anything more than that, but I think we do a good job inside the walls with our people and us, but I'm not sure that's the missional church that we want to be, or should be, or should be satisfied in being, and I'll read some quotes that will let you know a little bit more about that. But we have been talking about this for a couple of years, and I know one time we were in our Tuesday morning meeting, and we were talking about what should we do, you know, going forward, should we do this, or how should we go about teaching what we have learned as elders in this time? And I know David, who's not with us tonight, he and Winky had a trip planned to the Outer Banks, so Kenny said that they had to alter that a little, cause they can't get down to Outer Banks this week, so, but they're gone, but David, I told him I was gonna mention this, David said one time, well, you know, we've done a lot of studies, and we've learned a lot of things, but sometimes we never go farther than that, you know, can you relate to that? You know, there's a lot of studies out there, and we do them, and then what do we do with them, you know, and I think that's one thing that really hit the elders with these lessons is, we wanted to do something, we have no idea what'll happen, how this will come out, but we're dedicated to doing it, and I'm glad to see all of you too, I know there's plenty of others that probably would have liked to come, and couldn't for some reason, thirteen weeks is a lot of dedication, but thirteen weeks goes like that, too, it's just amazing how fast time flies. I wanna start off just one little quick thing, we were, we were over at Robin and Kent's last week, before he went into surgery, and Rhonda told us a little story, and she's gonna paraphrase and tell us that story.
We were in Alaska, and we were on our way, we were on our way back to the airport to Anchorage, and I always like to shop for yarn, and I promised I wasn't, I promised myself I wasn't gonna buy any yarn this trip, but I really felt convicted that I needed to go into this yarn store, and the minute that I walked into that store, I really felt like God had put me there, and the woman and I got off to a really bad start, I asked her a question about something that was on her website, and she's like, you know, I'm sorry, and then she tells me that she lost her daughter about six months ago, and I walked around the store, and there was a testimonial there about, you know, what happened to her daughter, and, you know, for those of you that don't know, I had cancer eleven years ago, so I waited until everyone left the store, and I just went, and I sat down on the bar stool, and we just had a talk, and just a conversation to complete another stranger, and it was so powerful, and, oh, you're really gonna give me the mic? It was so powerful, and I looked at her, and I said, you know this is divine, right? And she's like, I don't know what you mean, and I said, God brought me into the store to have this conversation with you today. And, you know, I told the deacons, elders, and I didn't really think that it was discipleship, because I feel like that happens to me frequently, I don't wanna say a lot, but I feel moved by the Holy Spirit to do things I don't wanna do, or really don't wanna do. But when you walk away, you're in such awe of the power of God, and just being submissive to allowing Him to work through you to minister to somebody else, to me, that's what discipleship is, maybe I'm wrong, I don't know, but for me, those are the experiences that I've been gifted to be part of.
Thank you. That was just one example that came to me last week, and then Janet shared something with me, that she was in a store, and there was a lady talking on the phone, and when the lady got off the phone, she was crying, so Janet, I think I tell this right, went up to the lady and said, are you okay? And the lady said she was, but, you know, sometime when we're discipling, we sometimes don't know how to do it, or we're scared to do it, has anyone, you know, you're in a situation sometime where you know you need to say something, but you just don't? Or you know you need to say something, and you, you know, you just shy away, and you don't know what to do, and you think about it later, but there's, that's such a natural thing to do, and God puts it together, you know, everybody says, well, that was coincidental, God is not coincidental, God is purposeful, and so what, one thing that I hope that will come out of these meetings, is that, you know, if we have apprehensive, if we're apprehensive about doing something, or if we don't know how to disciple, or if we don't know how to listen to the Holy Spirit saying, you need to go talk to that person, isn't that coincidental that you are a cancer survivor, and she lost her daughter?
Same exact cancer that I, it was just the tricky part.
Isn't that?
Exactly the same type, all of it.
Isn't that amazing, I mean, that God put that together, and that was in where, Massachusetts?
Anchorage.
Anchorage, Alaska, I mean, you can't make that up, you can't make it up. So, so one thing, that reminded me, Robin, when you told us that, that, you know, God is powerful, and He puts people together, but what do we do with it as disciples? That's the big thing. As you can see on your sheet there, I want to read a few quotes, and I'm gonna do this tonight, because this, these quotes are what hit me hard, this is a book that we read, and I think, do we have copies of Now Go Forward? If any, this is a great book right here, it will challenge you, and if you'll look, I'm a, I'm a sticky note kinda guy. Can you see that? I used a whole pad, I don't know how many, how many sheets are in a pad of sticky notes, but I used a whole pad, that's how it affected me, and tonight as introduction, I kinda wanted to read just a few quotes from these that affected me. If I had, if I had the name, it's like we've said, if each guy had to name the topic, or what he would call our topics, I would call it, what is a missional church, and why should we be disciples? It can be named many other things, and as people lead, Steve or Tim, they're gonna, they may have a whole different topic, but that's kinda my topic tonight that I'll go with. Listen to this, mission is not a separate department of the church, it is the driving force of the church. Hear that? And, and I think purposely, let's, let's think about our church, because that's why we're here. It is the driving force of the church. When we leave the building, we engage the culture with the love and passion of our Lord. Chad Hall writes, "A missional church lives out the church's three-dimensional calling to be upwardly focused on God in worship that is passionate." Now, when I read that, I know from the very beginning, the founding of Grace Community Church, we talked about putting down deep roots, right, Tim? To dig deep, and to lay a foundation for the ones that came to our church, and I think that we have done a good job, we can always do better, but I think we have done a good job. "To be inwardly focused on community among believers that is demonstrated in relationships of love and compassion." Again, I think we do a good job, the way we set up the church, which is biblical, is we had elders, and we have deacons, and the deacons take care of the church body, I mean, that's the way it was done in the, in the, in Jesus's time, and it was set up like that, and that's how we set up our church. And I think we do a good job, by the way we have the elders set up, and the deacons set up. And third, is to be outwardly focused on a world that does not yet know God. Now, when I heard that, or when I read that, I thought to myself, are we doing a good job to be outwardly focused on a world that does not yet know God? So that really got to me. You know, we do, I think, I mean, we do some things great, but as we focus on it, it kinda hit home that, do we do as good as we should? And that's one of the reasons we're coming together, to challenge, possibly challenge that. The next quote, "To be missional, we take responsibility not just for the internal life of the church, but also for bringing God's kingdom to a needy world. That's a critical move in the right direction. We are never closer to God than we, than when we are involved with His mission. Jesus was the greatest missionary, and as He was sent, so He sends us." I had a hard time narrowing these down, cause there's just so many here. "At the core of my being," the author says, "I believe the local church is the hope of the world, it not only addresses every need, but it leads people into God's way of living. By doing so, it transforms communities." Now, think about that as, again, as Grace Community Church, are we transforming communities? I know we've done projects, Dale, I think of the meal that we have for the workers in Johnny Wishon's tree farm, I mean, you can think of some things that we do that transforms communities, maybe. Operation Christmas Child transformed communities far away from here, but it says that we should transform communities, do we do that at Grace Community Church? And I'm not picking on Grace Community Church, because we all are Grace Community Church, but it's just, it just opened my eyes to a few things there. "We need to grow disciples, not just programs. God does not bless programs, He blesses people. Many American Christians never intend to become disciples, they expect the church experience will improve them rather than change them. They come to church to receive grace, and are unaware that they receive grace in order to extend grace. Discipleship requires a lot of time and work. Jesus began with people where they were, and moved them to maturity, sending them into the world to extend God's reign." It's gonna take time, and as we grow and learn some things, and as we put them to work, it's gonna take time to reach maturity, but that's our hope as we start out tonight, that we can get there. "Pray that God will give you passion for building His kingdom. Ask the Holy Spirit to soften your heart and move you to action. God will give you a burden as well as a vision to bring justice. This passion will line up with your gifting and your heart's desire. God lines that up with Max, with Bob, with Jim, it's all, we're all different, and He's gonna bring us things totally different than the one beside you. But nothing will happen if you don't take a prayerful approach and an active interest in making something happen. Friendships will not form with the unchurched unless you take some steps to become a friend. Take the initiative, take risk, and go out on a limb, that's where the fruit is." That's a nice quote, go out on the limb, cause that's where the fruit is. I hope some of these affect you like it has me. "Pray for wisdom and courage. Prayer is the tool the Lord uses to develop both a vision and a passion for doing God's will. So as we come together, one of the key points is prayer, and that's what I ask over these next thirteen weeks, that you will pray earnestly for our study, and that God will bring things to your mind that He wants us to learn. Prayer is the life breath of the church, it brings God into the picture. Apart from Him, we fail, so whatever we do here in the next thirteen weeks without Him and without prayer, we may be one of those that says, well, I went through this program at Grace, but it was nice, but what did you do with it? I didn't do anything with it." So I think that's what it's saying there. "The prayer focus for many Christians needs to be for the Lord to give us a love for the people in our community. We will reach only those we have the capacity to love, and I know so much in my, if I get through it all tonight, it talks about love, the love of mankind, and love being the premise of discipleship. We will teach only those that we have capacity to love, we will never reach our communities if we do not love people." I mean, that just makes sense, doesn't it? That's the way it is, so we have to love the people, we have to have a love for people. And then one more. I'd be interested to hearing from some of you, when you, if any of you take this book and read it, what you, what you thought, and how many sticky notes you had. "A healthy congregation is committed to growing mature disciples, not merely making people comfortable." Does that step on some toes? "Healthy congregations also have a simple process for making disciples, a process visualized and understood not only by the leadership, but by the members, it's a joint effort. Complexity is confusing, simplicity is better. Spiritual growth is intentional, not accidental or automatic. You've all heard this, mushrooms grow overnight while oak trees take sixty years, it's a process. Christian growth is caught more than taught. Discipleship takes time." So we know thirteen weeks sounds like a long time, but it isn't, because even after that, being a disciple and, and learning how to disciple, and... a disciple and, and learning how to disciple and understanding discipleship takes time. And I think we need to understand that. It's, it's not a simple thing that we are on a mission for right now. Now, I'll say this, I know there's, we've talked about the, the different people that are here. There are people here that have a pretty good handle on discipleship, maybe. And there are others that don't have a good handle on it. But we're all together and we're going to grow together and learn together. And I think with that, we're all going to raise up each other to be better disciples in this 13 weeks. That's what our prayer is. Okay. If you read that, let me know what you think. All right, let's look at some scripture. If you, if you have your tablets or your Bible or whatever, I'm going to be in Ephesians just for a couple of verses here. And I read these verses because I want you to see as we go about this study, what, what empowers us to be disciples? What empowers us to be disciples? Ephesians 2, 6 through 10. Most of you probably know this by heart. "What empowers us? And God raised us up with Christ and seated us with Him in the heavenly realms in Christ Jesus, in order that in the coming ages He might show the incomparable riches of His grace, expressed in His kindness to us in Christ Jesus. For it is by grace you have been saved through faith, and this not of yourself, it is a gift of God, and not by works, so that no one can boast. For we are God's workmanship, created in Christ Jesus to do good works, which God prepared in advance for us to do." Robin, I think God prepared you in advance for what you did. That's not building you up, that's just saying you were aware of it. And I'm sure that if we had time, many of you could tell stories of how God has used you, or maybe stories of how you wish you could have been used and you weren't. So that's what we're going to explore. But He gives us good works to do. Yes. Yep.
Look at Ephesians 2, 10. Who takes responsibility for the good works? Bingo. Do not feel the pressure of working for God. That's, that's not how it works. God takes the responsibility for the good works and He intersects them with your life.
And what He wants us to do is be ready to step out and do those good works. I mean, you, you know, He gives them to you and we've talked about this several times before, it's not that He won't give it to someone else. If you don't do it, maybe He would give it to someone else. If He wants it done, He will. But if you don't do it, does it stay undone? You know, challenge yourself to think about that. Because He's going to give you works to do, which He has prepared in advance. And it's up to us to, to do them. Look at Ephesians 1, 18 through 22. And, and please listen to this. When we talk about the power of the Holy Spirit in us, you know, I think sometimes people, I've heard this say, people say this, "I don't have the strength to do it. I don't have the know-how like to go talk to someone or to witness to someone." When you're in a study and people may say, "I just can't do it. It, it just, it natural for me." But I want you to listen at what is inside you. If you have the Holy Spirit in you, if you are a born again Christian, listen to what power you have. And challenge yourself. "I pray that the eyes of your heart may be enlightened in order that you may know the hope to which He has called you, the riches of His glorious inheritance in His holy people, and His incomparable great power for us who believe. That power is the same as the mighty strength He exerted when He raised Christ from the dead and seated Him at the right hand in the heavenly realms." Wow. "That power is the same as the mighty strength He exerted when He raised Christ from the dead and seated Him at the right hand in the heavenly realms, far above all rule and authority, power and dominion, in every name that is invoked, not only in the present age, but also in the one to come. And God placed all things under His feet and appointed Him to be head over everything in the church, which is His body, the fullness of Him who fills everything in every way." That is the power that's within us. Now, I know, I know a lot of times it's kind of not confusing, but it's kind of a paradox. You know, as Christians, we should be mild and humble and tender and so forth, and we should be. But I think a lot of times we don't indwell or know what indwells us through the power that we have as Christians. And I, I say that, I picked that scripture to say, it's okay to be scared, it's okay to not know sometimes how to act. But when you read scripture like that, we have the power to do unbelievable things, more than we can ask or imagine. We just have to start, what's the word? It just has to indwell in you and you have to believe that. So I think that's part of the discipleship too, is, is realizing that, that we have that power within us, to be able to go out fearlessly and do whatever God asks us to do. We're not here in these sessions to say, okay, Grady, after you're through with this sessions, God's gonna, we're going to ask you to go out and knock on 100 doors a day and be a disciple. But God may ask you to do that. We're not going to ask you to, to do this or do that, but we want you to be aware when God asks you, that you will be aware and know that you have the power to do it because He gives you the power. That's kind of what I see it working as. Any comments or questions so far? Tim?
Yeah, the Apostle Paul, a number of times in the New Testament, talked about power and he said, "It's His power working in us to do what is pleasing in His side. It's not us." And Jesus said in John 15, "Apart from Me, you can do..."
Nothing.
"It's Him, it's Him working in us, what pleases God." And this is what a healthy church looks like.
In Matthew 10, it, it names the disciples. It says, "Jesus called the 12 disciples and gave them authority to drive out impure spirits and heal every disease." These disciples, were they, how would I put this? When I think of disciples, they, they weren't anyone that were learned, that were just automatically knew what to do. It, it took Jesus a long time to get through to them sometimes, didn't it? They, they, He really had a hard time, but He stood with them. And as we stand together and look at being disciples, that's what we want to do is stand together and we know that there's different levels of discipleship in here, but we all want to come together and do the best we can. And we just automatically, I think sometime as humans, we, we don't think we're capable, but, but we really are. If you read some of the stories, I think Jesus, at times He would, I could see Him knocking His head and saying, "How much longer have I got to put up with you guys?" You know? It's just, they, they weren't the scholars and I'm not the scholar, but together, we can come together and learn about discipleship, I think, and have a good time doing it. What are our goals? And I, I put down three of my goals and I, again, the guys will have different goals for what they're teaching. You know, we're, we're going to have different topics that we'll teach, all dwelling on discipleship. But what are, what are our goals? And I put down first, "To recognize who we are and what we are capable of through Jesus." And the example with the, with the disciples is to recognize who we are, that we, that we have faults, that we have inhibitions, that we may not be able to just go right out and be disciples, but to recognize that we can learn and we can do, just like the disciples did, they had to stay in, in Jesus's care for a while. And so we're not any better or worse than those disciples at first because they had a hard time understanding. And throughout their walk with Jesus, they had a hard time understanding sometime how to be disciples, but in the end, they did it and we can too. A second goal is to know what a disciple is. And I picked out a few scriptures. Look at John 8:31, and you don't have to turn to all of these, but I've got a mark so I can get to them quicker. To know what a disciple is, John 8:31. Here's just a few scriptures that talk about disciples. And as you're studying and, and, and learning the Word over the next 13 weeks, I'm sure you're going to run into different scripture that, that will bring to light several things for you and for us. So I, again, I, I ask you to share those things as we study together. To know what a disciple is, John 8:31. "If you hold My teachings," this is Jesus talking, "if you hold My teachings, you are really My disciples. Then you will know the truth and the truth will set you free." So if you hold His teachings. So we need to do that, don't we? We need to hold His teaching and be accountable to those because if we don't know His teachings, how can we share that with others? So that's one thing we have to be mindful of, is to hold to His teachings. And there's a lot of teachings. And as you read, I want you to share those with us if, if the Lord impresses anything on you, which I'm sure He will. Matthew 28. I think I have these listed. Did I not have those listed on the, on your sheet? So you can take those later and look further if you want to, but I just wanted to, to highlight a few things. Matthew 28:18. "Therefore go and make disciples of all nations." So to know what a disciple is, "Go and make disciples of all nations, baptizing them in the name of the Father and the Son and the Holy Spirit, and teaching them to obey everything I have commanded you, and surely I am with you always to the very end." So here He's saying, "Therefore go and make disciples of all nations." Now, there's a couple of key words there. It says, "Go," but it also says, "make disciples." Where do you go to make disciples at? And, right, right here. Yeah, we, we can make disciples right here. It says, "Go and we've come, we, we've gone." So we're, we're going to help make disciples as we go through this 13 weeks. So go and make disciples. That's what He asked disciples to do. 1 Peter 4 8 through 11. I told you that we would, love would come back into it many times. And here, "Above all, love each other deeply, because love covers over a multitude of sins. Offer hospitality to one another without grumbling. Each of you should use whatever gift you have received to serve others." Now, that goes back to say, Bob's gift, Kent's gift, Butch's gift, they're all different, but it says, "You have received those to serve others in your way, to be disciples in your way." You're not going to be the same disciples. His way. Yep. Yep. So you're not going to be disciples the same and He's not going to use you the same. "Gift you have received to serve others," it's a gift, "as faithful stewards of God's grace in its various forms. If anyone speaks, they should do as one who speaks the very words of God. If anyone serves, they should do so with the strength God provides. It's all in God's will, so that in all things God may be praised through Jesus Christ." You know, we don't go out to gain praise when we go out, it's so God may be praised through Jesus Christ. So it's not that we accept the praise, but that God or Jesus gets the praise for how He uses you. So those are just a, a few scripture, you're going to find many more, to know what a disciple is. Those are just a few of the things. And the third goal I wrote down was to become a more available disciple. There's, in Matthew 24:14, and then it links together with 2 Peter. Let me get those together and I'll link those up here. To become a more available disciple. You know, in Matthew 24, it talks about the end of the world. And it talks about how there will be wars and signs of wars and rumors and nation will rise against nation and famines and earthquakes. Sounds familiar, doesn't it? Those are the things that people look at and say, "Oh, it's the end of the world." But that's not the end of the world. Jesus says, "And this gospel of the kingdom will be preached in the whole world as a testimony to all nations," and what will happen then? The end will come then. So the gospel of the kingdom will be preached in the whole world as a testimony to all nations. Well, who's going to be the ones that, that will go out and teach the gospel of the kingdom? Disciples, us, we will go out and do that. So we have to be brave, we have to be willing, we have to be able, we have to know what we're doing when we do that. Now, in, in 2 Peter, and I think this matches, it's really a neat match to this. It says in 2 Peter 3:12, I'll read 3, 11 and 12. "Since everything will be destroyed, what kind of people ought you to be? You ought to live holy and godly lives as you look forward to the day of God and speed its coming." Have you ever read that before? It says that as you look forward to the day of God and speed its coming, well, what does it mean, "speed its coming"? So back in Matthew, "As the gospel of the kingdom will be preached in the whole world and then the end will come." So it says, who's going to speed that coming of the end of the world? It's going to be the disciples, it's going to be the one that's preaching the Word. So if we sit back, you know, we come to church on Sundays and we sit back and we don't share that with anyone, maybe through what Robin went through or Janet or any of those coincidences that God allows, if we don't share that, if you look at it like, if I just share the gospel today and let's say that someone accepts Christ as their Savior, that's one closer to the end of the world, as God sees it. That's a neat concept, I think. So to be available means a lot to God, to be available for what- So to be available means a lot to God, to be available for what He wants us to do. And then, I'll read from John thirteen. Since this is the first lesson, I really did not know how long things would last, and maybe there'll be some conversation, but we may get out early tonight. John thirteen, thirty-four, and thirty-five. A new command I give you, love one another, there's that word love again. As I have loved you, so you must love one another. By this, everyone will know that you are my disciples, if you love one another. You know, if the word is repeated over and over again, you know, we've always said, that's pretty important. And it seems like, as we go through this study, that love is a key word in discipleship. Would you say so? I, I think it's a key word. So as you study and learn, look for that word, love, and see, see what, how it comes out as, as far as discipleship. Yes?
I would challenge everybody to examine the sacrificial love of the one who dwells us. And sacrificial means, it can make us uncomfortable, or it could cost us something, but because His love is in us, we do it anyway. And that's a little foreign to us, but it's His way. And I've seen it played out in Spain, week six thirty-five. It's just how it is in the world today. And the more people are disconnected, and alone they are, the more precious to them real love is. And it's very simple. It, it's simple to do, and you'll be amazed at the impact it makes.
Pam?
Something that just goes through my mind, when we're talking about the love, and you're talking about the sacrificial love part, you think of a warm, baby heart, but the blood is cold. And the Bible tells us in the latter days, which we are in, the love of baby will wax cold. So the Lord, I just thought the Lord was saying, we need to really guard our hearts, so that our heart stays that we want to be willing to give sacrificially love heart. And because of the influences of the world, we don't let our heart grow cold.
Right. And, and you said, you know, too, the, the world as it is, in my mind, we've, we've lost several generations, I think, of young people in, in these days. And we need to be mindful of that too, and pray for them, and keep them in our heart, because we, we're, we're not the Christian nation that we used to be, I'll put it that way. So we have to be aware of that.
And especially for anybody who doesn't feel you're capable of the discourse of theological things, of leading salvation Christ. Okay, if you'll show love, I guarantee this is true, they will come to you and ask questions. I've seen it, I've seen it a hundred times. They'll come to you, and then you just explain what Jesus did for you. It's not rocket science, but, but love is used.
And the Holy Spirit will give you the words to say. And even, even to another point, if, if you're not good at explaining that to a person, then you've got a buddy that is. I mean, you know, it's just, I, I think a lot of times, the inhibitions is what, is, is what I see or hear, that people just, they just say, I can't do it, I, I, I just can't do it. But they can, or if not, they know somebody that can. So I think, I think that's one thing that I hope the thirteen weeks will do. It will take any fear or trepidation away from us to be able to speak to people and to disciple. Look at Moses, yes. Exactly, yeah, a lot of examples like that, yeah. Donnie?
Well, I was just gonna say, in that, hopefully part of this is to, to help, help us define our spiritual gifts, so that we will know, you know, are we the ones to speak, are we the ones to greet, are we the ones to shake hands, are we the ones to carry the heavy stuff, or, you know, but be a part of that body of Christ, that, that we know, if I'm not gonna be the one that can bring someone, I will know who to take them to as well.
There you go, yeah, yeah.
You know, to build on Donnie's point there, if, if love's important, one of the spiritual gifts that I see rising to the top in importance is hospitality. A lesbian had, came over for tea, and baked bread, and stuff like that, and we just loved her. And when she got up to leave, she was crying, and she said, you are the first people in my life to invite me to their home. Look, if, if we wanna reach the world, love.
Yep, and there's a lot of situations out there like that, I'm sure.
Another thing I see too, and we're intimidated somewhat by, we look at the world, and they're hard, and what it's about. There are so many people hurting out here right now. I mean, you don't take on, we take kind of the talking. I mean, we got a lot of people hurting in this church right now. And it's, you know, it's, it's a way to love, and just to be a here.
Right, yeah.
I was listening to a evangelist talk about, you know, how he shares the gospel, we gotta be intentional. You know, it's something that we always gotta keep in our minds, you know, I'm just as guilty as the next guy. You know, it didn't take much to, to start a conversation, and interject Christ where we're in here. I was talking to a girl with a federal officer the other day, and just met her, and just said something to her. She said something about, she was dating a guy that was there playing, and she said, well, I was married for eighteen years at work. And so, I just told her, I was married for ten years, and my marriage was done with Jesus. And because I accepted Christ, and was able to rebuild my marriage, you know, I was able to share that little tidbit with her, let her know that there are answers out here, and all, and you know, if you go through that, I'll take it from there, and put the next person in our life too.
That's, that's a great testimony, yeah. That's, that's perfect, yeah, I like that.
I looked at one of the minutes that you said a while ago, and I think it's kind of paramount, the relationship to what it is that we're trying to be, and that just sends him to the Holy Spirit. And then Him guides us in the relationship to what it is that we're looking for. Sometimes we're just, we look so hard, and we just look right past it. Allow the, allow the Holy Spirit to, to open those doors up for us, and just make that, make that be the way. I mean, when you look at, when you look at the situation, and from a biblical standpoint, to be a disciple of Jesus, and walk with Him, and still have the, the trouble that they had trying to understand what He was saying, and, and what He was all about. And the, the reality of it is, is it was very simple, and, and, and they got it, but it, but it took, it didn't take, it didn't take right away. It didn't, it didn't stick, it took a struggle. And, and they had a lot of trouble trying to understand that. And, and at the end of the day, that's what this is all about, for us to find a pathway to understand and utilize in our lives. Well, it's been a long time since we've been an act, but.
We can go back.
We can go back. But I think, you know, part of, you know, discipleship, and that's what, you know, I'm really excited about for this class, one thing, with Acts one eight. But you receive power when the Holy Spirit has come on you, and you will be my witnesses in Jerusalem, Judea, Samaria, and to the ends of the earth. And so, you know, we have to, we have to start at home. You know, you go running off to Africa and do something, and without the support, without the, the discipline, the discipleship training, you know, that we need. But, you know, there's eleven thousand people in Sparta, I mean, that's, that's our Jerusalem, before we even get to Samaria.
Right.
You know, to the ends of the earth.
Right.
And so, start the movement, and ripple out from there.
Yep. And, and God will give us those opportunities, just like He did with Troy. It will have those opportunities. It's being aware of them, and not being afraid to speak up, just like you did, to witness to them. Very simple. You didn't have to go into a big spiel, a sermon, yeah, you just had to be a, be a testimony. Anyone else?
Anna?
In listening to the whole conversation, I guess, we're using this word discipleship. But I think, it's really, I hear two different concepts, from what, from what I understand, that we're talking about, but they sound like they're kind of squished together. And that is, we have discipleship at the very beginning, or evangelism, bringing someone, walking with them from being spiritually dead to being spiritually alive. So then we have a spiritual newborn on our hands. But discipleship is also that taking that spiritual newborn, and helping them grow up into spiritual maturity. And if the only thing we talk about is sharing the gospel, and we don't talk about that need to spiritual nurture, like Jesus talks about, we're missing a portion of what discipleship is. And so, as I'm just hearing a lot about bringing people to Jesus, I wanna add that point of, we need, first of all, to be helping each other grow up into spiritual maturity. And then I believe, as we do that, evangelism is a natural health flow of us becoming spiritual nurture.
Yes.
Can we just define this, what we're doing?
Yeah, because it, it is gonna be a, and own, there is many topics, and, and, and as we grow and grow these topics, that is part of the growth there. So that will be addressed in some of the guys' topics. Yeah, I mean, that's a great point, yeah, because we're not just supposed to stop somewhere. We're supposed to go and, go to the nations, you know, go and disciple, and bring people to Christ, you know. So yes, yes. Robin?
Ken and I grew up in Connecticut, where, you know, people know God through the church, but you can't mention the name of Jesus without them wanting to commit you to a holy farm. I, I mean, I'm serious. So I, I don't, I can't be prepared, but I come with a lot of baggage about, um, what we're saving to someone. But I can have a conversation with someone, and I can show love through some sort of connection I have. But if you ask me to do that, I'm gonna let you preach, absolutely paralyze you in here.
Well, as we go through these lessons, though, it, it's like Tim said, it's, it's not, it's definitely not gonna be what we ask you to do, but it's gonna be what God allows you to do. And you may see, you may see that you're not afraid. I, I don't know, we don't know what's gonna come out of these sessions, but I could see that could possibly come out of these sessions. So, you know, we're, we're open to everything that God's gonna do through these sessions. So I hear you, but let's see what.
Be careful telling God that you can't do something.
Let's see what happens, yeah, Kent?
I think that one of the most, for me, that I'm, I'm hearing in my head, the way my translation happens, or whatever, is, is words scare people, but actions speak. So my job may be, in one person's mind, a missionary, and I'll tell you that story in a second, but others would say, you know, I'm evangelized, or. You know, because they see something or hear it in their way. The most important thing I can do is share how God loves me and you. And if I attempt to do that, and whatever feeble attempt I make, He speaks through me and, and gets the message across and translates it, uses that tower, or babble, or whatever, and, and makes it happen. About eight years ago, I had my service dog and myself in my little truck camper traveling around, and, and I was looking for a place to stay up in New Jersey. And, and a friend of mine said, well, you know, I had stopped and had dinner with him, he's a Christian. And, and he's like, I asked him where Walmart was, you know, I figured I'd park there. And he's like, oh, don't park in Walmart, let me, let me call my pastor. And he took me over to the church, and I, I got out of the truck, got my service dog out with me, and, and the first thing this guy said to me is, tell me about your missionary work. And oh my God, I, you, you would've thought I was having a heart attack. I'm like, I am not a missionary. Next word's out my mouth, I have a mission to support veterans. And he's like, and that's not a missionary, how? I've read your stuff online, how, you talk about God, that's a missionary. But the word scared the living daylights out of you.
Right, right.
So, so the bottom line, no matter how we translate what somebody says, evangelism, missionary, discipleship, talk about what's in your heart, and, and God will do the work.
Good point. Anybody else?
I think you just need to remember, you know, you look at disciples, and you had a good point with them, look how fearful and how clumsy they were before the Holy Spirit came. But after Pentecost, these guys died and martyred deaths, and they changed the entire world. And we have a vaccine, you know, spirit in, in us.
Yeah. Exactly, yeah, I mean, and I think sometimes, like I read in Ephesians, we, we have so much power that God has given us through Him, that we, we need to use that, and need to appropriate it, you know, we need to, we need to use it, and not be afraid.
We're all misfits, rough edges, whatever you wanna think about it, man.
Yeah.
They can use.
Exactly. That's what we.
Don't think you're not gonna be scared. Trust me. I've been petrified, and got put into situations, and I, I just said, Jesus, you're my life, and you gotta do this. And first time I got called on to cast out a demon, the first scripture that came into my mind was the seven sons of Steba. And the demon said, Jesus I know, and Paul I know, but who are you? Just tore those guys up. And I remember saying, okay, God, we want to avoid that at all costs. I was, I was a bit afraid, but Jesus is my life, and He's cast out a lot of demons. So I just said, do it through Him. Don't think you're not gonna be put in situations where you're scared, because you will be.
Yeah.
But it's the life of Christ in you, doing the work of God.
Anyone else? We did pretty good. Let's end with a word of prayer. And next week, I've, I've got next week two, and the title is, the Son of Man has come to seek and to save. That's gonna be what we're gonna talk about next week. So if you study up on that some, all right. Do you have, yeah?
Real quick, before we pray.
Do what?
We talked about switching your second one with Dad, because he's gonna be in Minnesota week three.
Okay.
Are you, would that gross you off terribly if we do that?
Uh, no, no, that's fine.
Okay, 'cause if, if we do that, he had, he had something, he wanted to share them for homework.
Okay, all right, so I'll just do mine the following week then, okay? All right, you got homework, Tim?
I haven't put that up yet, I didn't try to play one, but you, you just tell them, and I'll send it out.
Okay, Joel, Joel's gonna put up a link. for the first chapter of the book, Back to Bethlehem. Have any of you gotten that book? We had lots of copies in the back, Back to Bethlehem. The first chapter is called The Exchanged Life. And Darrell has done a great job just laying the foundation, being disciples in a church. And then next week, we're gonna answer some of the questions, how do we do this? And it is the indwelling life of the tribe of Christ and the exchanged life. And I know Troy just jumped the gun, uh, wonderful job. Pentecost. And so I, uh, Joel's gonna put up a link, I think.
I might have to print it for him.
Yeah. If you don't have a copy of it, um, we're gonna put up a link there, you'll get a link, uh, to get an e-copy on your computer. And I just want you to read the first chapter and then we'll build on that.
Okay, any questions? Thank you all for being here, this has been a great turnout and, and if you can't come sometime, then, like I say, we'll have, uh, I guess we'll have recordings for you, so know, know that that's there, but we'd like to see you each time, been good to see you and be with you. Let's go to the Lord in prayer. Dear heavenly Father, we just thank you for our time together and for the ones that came out. Thank you, Lord, and, and as we explore these next thirteen weeks, Lord, we hope to answer some of the questions that's been raised tonight and as we go forward, maybe some of those answers will be, uh, will be answered by, uh, the next presentations down the line. We, uh, know that you, um, have impressed on us many wonderful things and, uh, I just pray that uh, your words will, uh, come out of us, that, that we may say what you want us to say, uh, in these next weeks. Lord, we love you and praise your name, and I ask that you'll just be with each one as they travel home tonight and keep them safe. In Christ's name we pray, amen.